I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 11, 2023. The time being 6:30 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order at this time. Please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city asks that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Kane?
Here.
Rick Entweller?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Here.
Vieta McKenney?
Here.
And Darryl Polling?
Darryl will be here tonight.
Did send Jamie and I a note earlier as well. Before we get started, I want to welcome our special guest this evening. We have Boy Scout Troop 578. They are joining us as part of their annual requirements to have a better understanding of government and attend a public meeting. So they had reached out and we gladly host them. And then I'm going to sit down with them after tonight's meeting and sort of talk through what we learned and all of that. So glad to have you. Thank you for being here. Thanks for taking an active role and to the leaders of the troop. Thanks for thinking of us. You all should have received a copy of the minutes from June 13, 2023. Any edits, additions, or corrections to those? If not, take a motion to approve as presented. Motion's been made by Vieta.
Second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Kevin abstains. We have back under Old Business Ordinance 2018-04 and 2020-10. Those were the two abatements from last month that we tabled. Brian, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in on that. Brian and I did meet with Dottie, not Dottie, Doreen Greavy, who's the assessor, and then a representative of GECOM to talk about this.
Yes, we met with Philip Seer of GECOM and kind of reflecting on what they submitted originally in their SP1 and then what they reported in their CF1. As far as employees, they were down. As part of the abatement agreement, you know, we asked that they, the companies, keep that near what they predicted. It was off that. So we inquired as to issues and I had a conversation. The pandemic had ever hit all businesses pretty hard and they're just repounding from that. And it is the last year of their payment. But yeah, if you comment on it.
I think one item to note that the equipment that was abated under this abatement is still there.
Still there.
That line is still in production.
Yeah. So I think going along with some of the new standards of both evaluation, the applications, but also evaluating the performance on the payments of the businesses, we kind of tried to do that due process to check in with the business and make sure that, you know, they understand they're into the bargain and they look forward to some bids coming up and some more contracts that they're going to be competitive on and hopefully get that employment number back up.
Did you submit this document at your time?
Yes, they did.
They did. We did not bring it to the last council meeting with the other approvals because we wanted to do further investigation on it. So that's why theirs got delayed.
Yeah, that was a choice by the Tax Abatement Committee. Everything was submitted on time.
I think based on the conversations we had with them and understanding that what we abated is still there and also a little bit of lessons learned on as we work through the process of, and this predates our requirements and the guidelines. So I think we should go ahead and approve it. It is their last year. I think we had a good discussion with them. I think Brian and I both have a better understanding of where they're at as a company and hopefully how we can help them continue to thrive in our community. So. I would ask that any further questions? I'd ask that we approve abatement 2018-04. Or the ordinance.
You want to do both together at the same time?
Can we do that?
They're both the same company, correct?
Yes.
Then yes, I think you can.
I'd make a motion that we approve ordinances related to, or the abatements, they're not ordinances, the abatement renewals for GECOM reference ordinance 2018-04 and 2020-10.
Excellent.
Jamie's made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you, Brian. Much appreciated. Under New Business, John Bryant with the Veritas Group is here for his update. He's got a presentation for us this evening.
We don't have any technical issues here. All right. All right. Good evening, council. I'll go ahead and load this thing up here. All right, again, John Bryant with the Veritas Group here to give an update for the month of July on municipal campus projects. So Mayor mentioned I put together a presentation that we'll do on a monthly basis here. So hopefully make things a little bit more clear from a visual perspective as well as just an update on schedule and site work in each project as it relates to municipal campus. So we'll go ahead and jump in here on the site work update. So this photo was taken last Thursday via our drone. So there's been a little bit of progress that's been made since then. The biggest thing you'll see if you were to go out there is they have started storm at the retention pond and they've got a ton of utilities that are out on site now. A lot of the water pipe, sanitary structures and whatnot. So they had a big delivery this week on all of that. So the retention pond is nearly complete. It is at depth and size. They are working on the fine grading of that currently. And then as we discussed last week, or last month rather, the building pads are completed. They've proof rolled those. Those all passed material inspection. So no stabilization was needed, which is out of the ordinary, which is fantastic. That'll be a big cost savings that we're identifying right now with GM developments. As I had mentioned earlier, Storm Sewer has started. They're about a week ahead of schedule on that currently. Moving in here to the fire station project specifically. So footings are expected to begin next week for the fire station specifically. So we've been talking about trying to hit structural steel beginning of August. They are still on target for that. They've got the steel already. It's not out on site yet, but they do have steel. So that's hoping to begin that second week of August. Chief Stermer and I have been going through equipment orders for any items that may have long lead times or risks with inflation. So we've procured several items already. Those will either be stored at the manufacturer's warehouse or on that South Tobacco Barn. So as I had mentioned in last month's meeting, so in our dorms to F F and E, Mayor Mark in chief and Katie with our office went to Business Furniture and COE showroom a few weeks ago. So we narrowed that list down from the RFP from five to two and viewed those. We made some edits that we're expecting to see back from those two firms by the end of this week. And at that point, we'll narrow it down to one firm. As discussed last month as well, we did see about a 60% cost savings on that, which totaled about 110 grand on savings to use the Sourcewell contract that you guys have with the city. So that was a big win there. And then as far as long lead time items, and Jamie, I misspoke earlier. The switchgear is about a 30 to 40 week lead time right now. So if there is any issues with that, that was the change, we're still on top of anything. If we needed to get any temp gear in there, that is still an option. So we don't foresee that being anything that's going to hold up anything with substantial completion. So that's something that we're continuing to stay on top of. We are awaiting the generator submittal from Gayler and working through that as well. But even if we weren't to get that for some reason, that will not affect us opening the fire station or the street department for that matter. So we'll go ahead and jump in here to the street department as well. So Runabomb is expected to mobilize. They're the GC or the CN. For the street department project, they're expected to be on site tomorrow and I confirmed that with Jim Marshall this afternoon. And they expect to begin footers and foundations pretty quickly once they get out on site. So I'd expect those to begin early next week. As mentioned earlier, proof roll has passed on both sites, which will allow them to begin digging for footers and having the city out to inspect those as well. So same goes for the street department with Business Furniture and COE showroom visits. We're expecting revisions this week. And then same thing with the procurement items. So Runabomb, the street department's not got quite as big of switchgear. So we're not seeing quite as drastic of lead times as we are with the fire due to the size of that switchgear, but still something that we're working on with their subs. So that concludes the two projects budget. As we discuss each month, that GMP was said that 199 away, there has not been any change in the budget. All the alternates fell within that number. So we didn't have to go back and look at upgrading or using contingencies to afford any of those allowance or those alternates, which is great. And the project does still remain on schedule to complete in the spring of 2024. So I took a drone video again last week. We'll watch about a minute of this. It'll help further explain some of the items that we discussed here tonight. So. Attention ponds dug. Again, the biggest change is if you went out there right now, you'd see a lot of utilities out there. Steel's out on site. There's been, I'd say there's about 50% of the stone that's been placed. Most of the rest of the stone will be placed here once there's more progress on utilities. And that big open area at the bottom of the screen for the street department, that's all stoned. Will be stoned as the finish. It's dried up a little bit out there. Again, the ground's so hard that it does hold a lot of the water, which is not, not an issue at all. They're pumping whatever they need to pump. It's on the stone areas in order to not allow it to set in too much. But again, those pads are hard as rock. So we're looking in really good shape from that perspective. So. That concludes my update on the month of July's update. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for John? John and I did have a conversation, obviously, as much as we like to see John. These do tend to be relatively short. So I think we may move them to every other month. He's going to send me sort of this PowerPoint monthly and I will attempt to be the best representative of the Veritas Group that I can be and show that and sort of talk through what he provides me with info as much as we like to see John. We do compensate John for his time to come. And so every other month, I think it's going to be kind of our plan going forward unless somebody objects to that. But I think we'll continue to provide the monthly presentation if that's acceptable.
Something significant comes up where we need a monthly update.
Absolutely. Yeah, please let me know. I'm more than happy to come out when needed. And as we further progress with the construction at the end of the project, there'll be a lot more moving when we start going vertical. So at that point, probably later this year, I'll be out on a monthly basis. But if it's not needed, then we'll do it every other month or as needed. So.
Thank you, John. Much appreciated.
My pleasure.
Up next, we have Rose Cronely with the Main Street Greensburg. She has our annual Main Street update. Good evening, Rose.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So Main Street Greensburg, about us, if you didn't know. We're a public private entity that was founded in 2005 with a commitment to preserve and support the downtown community. We're an Indiana accredited main street and a member of Main Street America. Our organization is driven by the Main Street four-point approach, which includes organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. 2022 is a year of many changes for Main Street Greensburg. We welcomed new staff, board members, and countless volunteers. We also grow our events, programs, and technical assistance offerings. With 101 active businesses in our district, our team has been very busy working to increase communication and our advocacy. The tremendous growth that Main Street Greensburg has seen is a direct result of the dedication of our team and the incredible support of our community. With this support, we've been able to hold some of the largest events to date for our organization, expand our work in historic preservation, and continue supporting Greensburg's prospering downtown economy. Our annual report reflects the year of growth that we've had. It's been 17 years since a group of community members bonded by their passion for our historic downtown founded Main Street Greensburg. Our team remains committed to furthering our mission and continuing to expand our positive impact on the community by advocating for and promoting our downtown. 2022 saw nine new businesses join our district. We had eight facade improvement programs, or facade improvements, five business closures, and one business expansion. We have an 85% occupancy rate in our commercial structures and 101 businesses total in our downtown district. I could list pages and pages and pages of all of our successes of 2022. But I think three really highlight not only the value of Main Street, but our community support. We logged 1,800 volunteer hours last year. That's everything from helping at the farmer's market and various event days to cleaning up trash, picking up litter, helping with technical assistance, and teaching people various educational programs. That's a big win for us. Also throughout our events, we had over 15,000 visitors to our district. We also provided over 80 hours of one-on-one technical assistance to business owners downtown. And that includes everything from historic preservation to various business needs that they might be experiencing as a startup or growth and expansion. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about 2023, though. This year to date, we've been awarded five grants for the farmer's market, holiday walk, and our new community calendar, Yodle. We also launched a new community gift card called EFD, and that's in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We've hosted the Food Truck Festival, half the farmer's market season, our first Fourth Friday event that also included a cruise in. We also awarded two facade grants helping to restore two exteriors and create three new housing units in our district. So thank you. Thank you for helping in making 2022 such a success and helping us get to where we are in 2023. We're grateful for you, our team, volunteers, sponsors, and the entire community. Without your support, none of what we've done would have been possible. As we look to 2023, we're excited to expand on that foundation that's been laid for us over the last 17 years. Any questions? Thank you all.
And Ally has also been on board with Main Street for nine months, eight months?
We've both been on board since August, so we're approaching a year.
That's right. And we're very fortunate to have you. Thank you for all, thank you for all the work that you do. So much of it goes unseen, but their leadership of Main Street has made a big difference and I think we're headed in the right direction. So thanks, Rose. Any questions for Rose or anything? I think you have a copy of the presentation in your packet as well. Next item, I moved myself up the agenda. That's what happens when you make it. But I also wanted Rose to be here if we had questions about our next topic. So ordinance 2023-12 is the creation of a designated outdoor refreshment area. This is brand new legislation out of the state of Indiana that allows more cohesion in the events and local establishments on the square that allow for that to transition, for them to sell drinks that can leave their premises. Indiana has never had that ability before. Ohio has had it a long time. It's very successful. But you have to designate an area and put up signs and follow the ordinance. So the city creates that. What you have in your packet is the first reading. I am hopeful that we can pass it. If there are questions or conversations, we can address those as we do the second reading over the next month because I am trying to get this in place before the Fall Festival, if you're so willing. But it also has to go to the state for approval. And I believe their portal for this just opened this week, the first. It's, so it's all brand new. So I'm sure that they will have a massive backlog. But in theory, and in the high points of it, you've got the ordinance, the city council has to create a district. You set the boundaries, which I've proposed in the map. They do include Pirate Park and Rebecca Park. The reason it extends down Washington Street the way it does is the law requires there be one distributor in the district. And since we don't have anything out that way, that's why it's kind of connected so that the park can be a part of that process or be a part of that program as well. It does not put any restrictions on current vendors. They don't have to change anything in their permit or they're not restricted in anything that they can do by their excise permit. If they wish to be a part of the DORA, they have to submit a separate state. It's a one-page permit that comes to us and then we submit it with this to the state as they want to be a part of it. But it doesn't place any, they can continue to operate today as they have yesterday. No changes in that. If they want to participate, then they have to follow certain rules as laid out in the ordinance, as laid out in state statute, as far as amounts, volumes, percentages, et cetera. If a business in the DORA does not want people to carry in product into their business, they can post a signage, which Main Street and the city are working collaboratively on a brand so that it's very easily identifiable. If they do not want someone to bring an open container into their establishment, they can post that. It is enforceable. They can ask them to leave. It doesn't become a burden on them. And if they are willing to allow people to carry in open containers, they're allowed to do that as well. So I think those are kind of the highlights, Rose. Did I miss anything substantial?
The only beverages that can be consumed are from designated retailers.
Yes, you can't carry in something from the outside. You have to purchase it from a, either temporary vendor in the DORA or one of the permanent vendors in the DORA. You can't just carry in something from your house.
And I would note that, and the mayor's correct, this is a very new, a very new statute. It's a very new, you know, component. But really, it's more of a modification to the open container law than it is anything else, which is really just, under current Indiana law, you can't have an open container outside of, you know, the business that you're supposed to be in. It's not uncommon. Marion County did a similar modification to the open container law during the Super Bowl. They passed a kind of an emergency, not emergency, but passed a temporary exemption. And I think that was a little bit, probably a test run a bit of whether or not this would be something that could be feasible in other communities. It is very, very popular in several communities and it's moving forward very quickly. I do, I have looked over the ordinance. I do think the ordinance that was, that is presented in front of you is in accordance with the statutory schemes and that this is something that should, that is legal and if you should so choose, could be very good for your community. And my community too.
Any further questions?
Main Street had one. It's a good deal. The council had one. I don't want it so far out. I know why you're doing it, but including residents, I've got a problem with. I just don't have a grasp yet. Going so far down Washington Street and stuff, I can see some problems coming. You take a homeowner, you can't buy the ordinance. You cannot bring a beer out of his refrigerator onto the front porch and somebody pulls up and you go down and talk to him. According to the ordinance, he's, am I right?
I would say it would depend on whether or not he, I would believe, left his actual property. Because certainly, under Indian, I mean, under, under Indian law, if I, if I go to my fridge and get a beer and walk out to the edge of my property, I'm still on my property. I haven't violated any laws.
When you go on the sidewalk, getting that public.
That's still your property.
It's still, it's still, for terms of open container, I think you're still okay. I certainly don't think you would be charged or prosecuted with that. But I do understand your point. I would note, however, that the ordinance is very good, or the statute, statutory scheme that was enacted is very good at establishing, this is how we're going to create this. It's not great on saying, this is how we're going to modify it later if we decide that this is different. So it's really kind of a, you know, this is the opportunity for you to create this and see what works within your community. I anticipate that as this progresses and you start seeing more, you know, more communities utilizing it, more communities having issues like that, if it does arise, you're going to see some statutory language that beefs up how to modify some of these areas. Because you can have up to seven different locations within a designated, you know, DORA type of scenario. And I think, I suspect that there will be modification to the overall statutory scheme as this progresses that will address some of those types of concerns as they get sort of fleshed out through action. But in terms of your specific hypothetical, I don't know that you would necessarily, as a homeowner, have an issue as long as you weren't like walking up and down the street per se.
So the DORA has to be one contiguous area?
We, we are allowed to have up to seven, but each one must contain a permanent licensed distributor.
I see why you're doing that, but if you had seven and you had a distributor in that area, I would.
Yeah, then we could, then we could cut it off. I can try to find an answer to that. I agree with Chris. I don't think citation and prosecution of that would be very likely at all. I guess, yeah, I guess in theory, we could make the northern boundary of Washington Street and the southern boundary of the Washington Street right of way the property or the district lines. So then it would literally just be the sidewalks. You're not, in theory, supposed to carry open containers down sidewalks today.
Not in theory, no.
Are you arrested for that recently, aren't we, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay. So maybe we can flesh that out a little more and look at that. I hadn't thought about that. But if you're on your property. Because a lot of this is, it's not necessarily all public property driven, but a lot of it, in our case, is in that the district encompasses private property. That's why you can restrict somebody from carrying it into your business. But in theory, it gives you the ability to walk around outside those walls with it.
Downtown stuff I don't do, but when you get residents, it's.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to pass 2023-12 on first reading. Motion's been made by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Vieta. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Up next, Sarah Hamer, Building Commissioner. 2023-09, which is an amendment to 2020-07.
Correct. Good evening. You should have received in your packets ordinance 2023-09, amending ordinance 2020-07, those, the first two sections, section four and section six, specifically section four B. In ordinance 2020-07, we would send violation notices on grass, trash, junk once every three years. If they had received a letter in the past three years, they would not receive another one from us. We would like to change that to if they have been the subject of a violation or notice in the current calendar year, they will not receive another notice from us. So if they have a violation for grass next week and then again next month, they're not going to get another letter from us. Now, next year, if it's a year later, then they would.
This came up as an appeal in the Board of Works meeting last month and the Board of Works suggested that we look at this ordinance and make this adjustment. So just share them where they came from.
Thank you.
I even saw, I know who did the appeal because he sat down with me for an hour and a half and we went through it word by word. And I could see the point because he'd had a violation within a very extended period of time for another violation. But I think, in my opinion, I think it's a good modification.
The second, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rick.
That explains what I asked you before.
Yes. The second amendment would be in section six, the appeal procedure. We have a petition to appeal a violation. It is in form that they get from our office. They have to turn in that appeal at least seven days before the Board of Works meeting so that it's time to get that on the. so that's time to get that on the agenda. And the appeal needs to be filed within 30 days of the date of the letter they received of the violation. We don't want someone coming in six months later to appeal something, a letter that they received about their grass or trash. So those were the two amendments to that ordinance. Any questions?
The section regarding the Board of Works' ability to consider the appeals, that is from the old ordinance, that remains. It was, we've added that they have to submit, because before it was they could just show up.
Yes.
And we're trying to get people to, kind of like the stormwater appeals, to provide some documentation, allowing you to get the information together.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions for Sarah on that?
I'll make a motion we pass 2023-09 on the first reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie, signify by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Can we suspend the rules on that? It's not, there's no.
There's no money involved.
Yeah. I'll make a motion we suspend the rules on 2023-09.
Motion's been made by Jamie, Jamie, second by Kevin. All those in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
I'll make a motion that we pass 2023-09 on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Next, we have ordinance number 2023-10. This is a new ordinance regarding a rezon of property. This is property, I'm sorry.
10 or 11?
It's 10. We had to adjust that. Yeah. This is rezoning of property, well, you had all the information in your packet. I'm sorry, I don't have the map in front of me. I failed to bring copy that with me. Property located on F4.
14 South.
14 South Michigan. Hold on, I'm sorry. 404 South Michigan and 315 South Wilder Street. These properties are owned by Tim Hedinger. This went before the planning commission last week with a positive recommendation for the rezon. To rezon the two properties at that location that were in R2 to a B1. There was one location at 404 South Michigan that used to have a residence on it, and that residence is no longer there. He uses that as part of his business. And the other residence at 315 South Wilder Street, that home is still currently there, but they're using it more for like an office and stuff, part of the business. So he's wanting all of his properties to be zoned the same as B1 for business, which would be appropriate. And then he's wanting to make that into two parcels instead of five parcels. It just really cleans that area up a lot.
This was recommended by the planning commission, right?
Yes, positive recommendation by the planning commission.
I'll make a motion we pass 2023-10 on the first reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Can we, I think we've suspended the rules on these before, too, right? So I'll make a motion we suspend the rules on 2023-10.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Rick to suspend the rules. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
I'll make a motion we pass 2023-10 on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie.
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Next up, Clerk Treasurer Amy Borns, Resolution 2023-05.
So in May, when Sarah presented her curb appeal program, there was an agreement from the council to reimburse those funds for the projects out of the already budgeted, her budget from the building in Southy. However, the $10,000 where it's at right now that was budgeted is in the 100 series, which is for payroll, and just for bookkeeping purposes, we need to transfer that to the 300 series for, so we can actually pay and reimburse people out of the correct line item. So this resolution is just to transfer that money to the right line item so that I can appropriately reimburse people when they turn in their, just bookkeeping.
I'll make a motion we pass 2023-05.
With one amendment, that we change the date in the final line to today's date.
I actually have it correct on here that you're going to sign. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, perfect. Motion's been made by Jamie. Second by Kevin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Perfect. Ordinance 2023-11.
This is from the rainy day fund, the additional appropriation that we discussed November last year. We had moved money into the rainy day fund from other funds that we didn't use money from so that we could use it for the Park Road project. We now have that fund in place, so the first step to get this money into that fund is to move it out of rainy day.
If you all recall the conversation, that was very clear, then we were just parking it there, so that when we came back to this, it's not we're using rainy day dollars for this, we are retrieving the dollars that we kind of stacked up at the end of the year to put into a fund that is now established. Sarah, motion to approve 2023-11. Then, motion made by Vita, second by Jamie. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, we will move on to updates, then. Board of Works, Jamie?
We actually decided to keep the Dodge Charger that we were trying to sell. We're going to use that as a, actually a car out at the airport for some assistance there. We got the same update by the Veritas Group tonight. Zeke came and wanted to spend a whole lot of money. We approved the purchase of a sledge truck for $205,000 and a stormwater repair, ID soil excavating. Ron came and presented a stormwater appeal, which was denied. We looked at a project by the mayor's intern this year and approved that out at City Park. We've got some drawings, if you want to see that here in a little bit, actually. Then intern from the clerk treasurer's office came and presented a driver selection criteria policy, which was approved. Mayor Marsh talked about, oh, the, the terminal out at the airport. We approved to spend some money to refurb and rehab the terminal out there and the furniture out there. If you have been out there, it's, I don't know, frat house-like. It's definitely, so, there we go. It's, it definitely needs some improvement. And then we approved some money for the Decatur County Memorial Hospital Foundation to improve some sidewalks out there along the new expansion area they're doing. And then Chief McNeely came, we approved the sale of a forfeiture vehicle and set a date for potential interviews.
Any questions for Jamie?
Rick, Main Street?
One thing, Rose again for her presentation, and then farmer's market vendor numbers are really, are doing good, some even selling out. The Fourth Friday last month was a success for the weather. They had about 20 cars, car show, and over 150 at the band. Friends of Freddy's food truck was a real good excess, success. They estimated over 4,000 people showed up for it, and a lot of good feedback from out-of-town people. The next Fourth Friday will be July 28th, they have a band and a car show again, and they had one ribbon cutting for Pickers Paradise. They've got an owner there, so got it in ribbon cutting.
Kevin?
On the planning commission, you've heard what we did, public hearing for the rezon, and then the favorable recommendation for the rezon, and I do not have any update for the EDC.
Anna saw the waste.
It's special meeting, it was 30 minutes, didn't really, not one, but an regular meeting, so nothing really.
Yeah, mostly just internal stuff. Daryl's not here for redevelopment commission. There was some updates provided regarding getting our housing committee back together, about finding developers and working through that, and also the American Structure Point continued to work on Broadway and the Overpass projects, and I think that was all. They're going to adopt their plan next month, because we are publishing the notice for that. That was the RDC update. The EDC Corporation's annual meeting is Thursday morning. I believe that's open to the public, but REEDY Financial Group, who's our financial advisors, are coming over to do a conversation and discussion about housing and what that looks like in the community to the EDC, so we'd like to attend. You're more than welcome to do that. Chamber of Commerce had a very successful women in business conference a couple weeks ago. The, the city was well-represented, along with our interns from the clerk's office and Scotland, EDC in the chamber, and so there was a lot of young individuals there who were representing us and also learning from that. We have had a couple resignations from the animal control board. There's been some discussion with the county about maybe what the future of that looks like. Haven't really made any progress in that. They are working to bring a, like a part-time in-house event onboard over there. Nothing big from the water board, right, Rick? It was just main, typical monthly stuff. If you have not been out by the airport, I would encourage you to take a drive. They have pavement down, it looks like a runway, and it's a lot of pavement. So Ron and I went out one day, and Scotland and I went out one day and took a look at what they were doing, and it was quite an impressive operation that they had. I believe that they are about done with pavement, if they are not done. So take a look at that. The ribbon cutting is scheduled for September 23rd at 10 o'clock, or 10:30 in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning. So encourage you to participate. That is a Saturday, so hopefully everyone can make it. We should have a lot of opportunity to celebrate that project. What Jamie had talked about with the terminal is getting that kind of fixed up and more modernized and making it part of our front door to the community that has been long neglected, and I am hopeful that that will be finished and done by the time we get there it's supposed to be. We don't have really an update from the insurance committee. We've got, Julie Nobby and I are going to meet with Jamie on Thursday to kind of go through some of the things that we found and kind of talk about how maybe we want to proceed with that. That kind of leads me into my next question slash discussion. I think we have our meeting on August 8th, is our regular city council meeting. I would propose that we shoot for August 9th, which is obviously the Wednesday following our meeting, to have our first budget workshop. I think that will give me plenty of time to get it to REEDY, to get it finalized. I'm going to be out of town for a little while. I don't think I'll have it. And then by the time I get back, give you a week to review it, and then that, which is August 9th. And then we'll look at the September meeting and timelines and things like that, if that's, I mean. Go with that for now. That's our, that's kind of the working plan, I think. Okay, that's it.
Do anything to make that official so we can publicize that date or?
Let me get, we, we only have to do 48 hours notice, so we've got plenty of time. Let me make sure I can get all that done and shipped off and get it back, but I'll put it on your calendars, because I think that'll be our date. Okay?
Can I mention one other thing real quick?
Yeah.
So they, they did start doing a State Board of Accounts audit for 2022, so the other members of the council will probably be receiving an email most likely tomorrow, just kind of asking some questions that they may use back for the audit, so just giving you a heads-up if you see it, an email about that. It's, it's not a fraudulent email, but it might be about fraud, so I don't know.
And now the entire troop, 578, is going to give their presentation. Ready? You're up. That's right. That was pretty aggressive, I thought they were sleeping. Take a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thanks, everyone.